We'll start this special meeting. So, this is of course a special meeting of the Georgetown City Council.
Georgetown City Council and Scott County Fiscal Court in a form of a work, joint work session. The agenda is listed here before you. And what we're doing tonight is to talk about presentation from the Housing Needs Assessment, RKG Associates Incorporated. They're gonna give a 30-minute presentation. And at the end of that 30-minute presentation, council and fiscal court, you have 15 minutes to ask questions at around 5:45. We're gonna close this off because we're on a time limit. Because of our next session, we up to take part in. So, but if you still have some questions that you want to get answered, feel free to email me and I will get those answers for you and get that back to you as soon as possible, if not sooner. So with that being said and ready to go, presentation of the Housing Needs Assessment, RKG Associates. If you would introduce yourself.
Hello? Hello? Oh, can you all hear me? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Summer Pan. I'm the project manager for RKG Associates. Nice to meet you all today and happy early holidays. I guess we can dive right in if we can switch to the presentation on the screen, please. Awesome. Again, this is like a presentation of our findings from the Housing Needs Assessment for Georgetown, Scott County. First off, this is the study region that we compare the county and the city to. Basically, we picked counties immediately surrounding Scott County and the study region includes Scott County itself as well, just to know. Next, please. So, let's just get right into the findings. So, we analyzed different sections, different components for the Housing Needs Assessment. Here are some findings for the demographic economic analysis. In terms of population trends, the most important thing to take away from this is that Scott County has been seeing and is projected to continue to see very strong population grow all the way until 2050. So, that means that the housing needs in the city and county is very likely to continue to grow into the future. Next, please. This is talking about trends, characteristics for households. Important takeaway is that Scott County has higher share of owner household and also the growth of household population mostly driven by owners as well. The county has also professionally more families, even though the growth has been driven by or faster, letting by non-family households. In terms of age growth occurring at all age cohorts because of the strong population gains, however, this is driven mostly by both older adults, 55-plus, and also younger people, 18 to 34. And that means that there's likely more housing demand in the near future as population keep growing for, you know, active seniors, young professionals, especially those starting families, more housing need for universal design, meaning that housing designed to meet all mobility and ability levels. Population and household growth mostly driven by people with two to four persons. But again, the most important takeaway is that growth driven by, so there would be more housing needs for like ownership homes, seniors, young professionals, et cetera. Next, please. In terms of income and education, most important takeaway is that it's a positive trend that the county and city has been, have been seeing higher level, increasing level of education attainment levels, especially those with bachelor degrees and higher. And correspondingly, household income has also been increasing fast. In fact, the group with the highest income, 100K and plus, this population has been growing the fastest. And compared to the state, both the city and the county has higher median household income, which is a positive trend again. And that means that residents in this area have higher ability to pay for housing cost. But also, that will mean that maybe the housing market will shift into the future in terms of price points because of this increasing demand from higher income buyers, renters, et cetera. Next, please. So, some implications for the demographic section. I'm trying to read here. There is a strong need, most importantly, to increase housing supply into the future. Also, need to increase housing supply for, like we mentioned before, certain population groups such as those starting families, active seniors, young professionals. A need for aging in place and need to plan for, you know, an aging population, which is a nationwide trend. Therefore, we need housing that meets different mobility levels. May need to increase the supply of housing options at the higher end of the market to reduce competition at the top. We'll talk about this later on in the affordability section. Next, please. Now, let's get into employment, wages, economic trends. Most important takeaway, similar to population gains, job growth has been very strong and is projected to continue into at least 2034. Next, please. So, these are just giving you a sense of, on the left-hand side, top 10 major employer industries and the right-hand side, future top 10 highest growth employment industries in the county. Important takeaway is that higher-paying jobs account for around 64% of the future job gains in the county. So, this likely suggests that there is increasing household wealth, corresponds to, you know, our previous findings in terms of education, income levels, et cetera. Next, please. Implications from this section includes that asked job are projected to continue to grow into the future, so will housing demand. And again, the job growth is linked to the population gains and population gain contribute to job growth and vice versa. So, these two, or all these factors are interconnected. There are, though many residents in the county are, sorry, I can't. High-paying, yes, thank you. There are some lower-paying industries, for example, combination food, retail services, et cetera. And the inability of these workers, you know, for them to access attainable housing that's appropriate to their income levels will likely impact the sustainable economic growth in the future. Next, please. Now, let's look at the city and county's current housing characteristics and some trends. So, the county primarily, the housing stock consists of single-family homes. And growth has mostly also been driven by single families. However, there is increasing development demand for the residential market, especially since 2000s. And there are increasing interests, or there is increasing interest in higher-density residential developments such as multifamily, higher-density auto forms of housing, et cetera. Another important takeaway is that vacancy has been declining and that means that existing housing demand is very strong. Next, please. In terms of income, how it compares to housing costs, because of the strong economic growth, job growth, population gains in the region, like we mentioned, the growth of higher-income population has pushed up the housing market so that home values and rents have been increasing fast. Even though currently, the median home value for the county is relatively lower than national, national figure, like on, on average, the national median home value is around 400K and here is 240. So, appears to be, this is like a very affordable housing market. However, like we mentioned, because there's strong economic growth and increase in higher-income households, this is likely to change in the future as the housing market will respond to the demand from higher-income renters and buyers. And if no intervention is implemented right now or no preventive approach is taken right now, the housing market will most likely become more unattainable in the future. Currently, there is around 38% of the renters being cost burden in the county. Next, please. In terms of housing development trend, so we'd like to see, you know, development activities, how it has changed over the decade or so, how developers or the market has been responding to the changing demand. We can see that, you know, more housing development in recent decades, especially since 2000, higher density, more interest in apartments. And newer homes built right now average around 325K for, for sale homes. And newer apartments developed since 2017. On average, their rent is between 1,000 to 2,000 per month. Next, please. Now, here are some more detailed market data. So, previously, you just look at the development trend, how much has been built. And this is using market data in terms of, you know, days on market, medium sale price, sell-to-lease ratio, meaning that the sale price compared to listing price, you know, the percentage, to actually look at how, you know, support our previous finding. You can see for for-sale home market here, very strong, continue to increase in medium sale price, very low days on market. And again, homes sold in the past one year in terms of new housing demand. All the homes sold are between like 200K, 350K-ish, 2,000, 3,000 square feet and mostly built, like we said before, more recently since 2000. Next, please. For apartment market, in a lot of cases, represent rental market. Market data indicates that, again, extremely tight housing market, characterized by inventory growing, meaning that more developers interested in building and most likely renter demand increasing as well. Very low vacancy, positive absorption, meaning that, and this is a positive trend, meaning that in a given time, there are more housing units, in this case apartments, being leased than being vacated. Also, rent's been rising, being pushed up by the increasing demand. Next, please. Implications, so very tight housing market, especially for multifamily market. We should encourage the supply of higher-density housing development, both for sale homes and for, you know, the rental market. That includes not only single-family homes, but diverse type of housing such as those like called missing middle housing, meaning that they are a little bit higher density than, than single-family homes, but not as high as like say multifamily. So, they're in the middle that serve as a transition between single-family residential to higher-density multifamily. We need more smaller units to accommodate for the rising demand. Again, right now, new residential developments built in recent years, especially for sale homes, are getting bigger. However, it's really hard to provide affordable housing if the houses are big, right? It's impossible because of the cost. So, by providing smaller unit size, smaller homes could increase the housing options and also potential of housing costs for people. There's also a need to increase housing supply to catch up with the population gains. Like we mentioned before, population growing very fast, but the housing supply in recent years, the, in terms of growth rate, is not as, is not catching up with the growth rate. Next, please. Okay, so this is the, a very important section of our analysis, which is looking at housing needs by affordability. So, what does affordability actually mean? Affordability means different things for different people because different people have diverse incomes, right? So, affordability for me is different for affordability for you. So then, for example, if I am a low-income person living in an owner household, most likely three-person based on US Census for this area. For me, defined by HUD, I will earn at or below 80% of the area median income. And HUD defined me as being low-income. So, what is affordable for me? First off, I earn at or below, so no more than 60K per year. So, for me, I can't afford no more than 189K if I buy a home using a loan backed by FHA or if I use conventional loan, maximum home purchase price, no more than 225K. That is to assume that I pay no more than 30% of my annual income on housing, defined as not being cost burdened. So, in an ideal scenario, you don't pay more than 30% of your annual income on housing. Otherwise, you're considered cost burdened by HUD. So, we use the same assumption, say if I'm a renter, most likely two-person household. I will, if I am low-income, I, my maximum income is 54K per year. And if I don't want to be cost burdened, the maximum rent I can afford per month is less than $1,200. So, that is, that is what affordability look like, for example, for low-income households. Next, please. So, and then we looked at all the, all the households using US Census data, renters, owners, and then compare their income levels to, you know, existing housing stock, for-sale home, rental housing, to look at whether, whether or where are the mismatches in terms of supply and demand in the housing market, meaning that the value and prices for housing compared to people's income. So, on the left-hand side is the chart for ownership market. We can see that there is a shortage for the lowest-income people and also the highest income. So, meaning that these people are not occupying housing that is priced appropriate to their income levels. So, not 30%. For the highest-income people, they have more options because they have money. So, most likely, they're paying less than 30%, so not maximizing what they can afford because, like we mentioned before, the current housing market is relatively affordable. If they can't find higher-value homes, they have to step down, say to purchase a home that are lower value, that are theoretically priced, should be priced for people in the lower-income ladder, say 120% of AMI or 80 to 100% AMI. So, that creates a downward pressure. So, the people at the highest income occupying homes and then the next income level have to occupy homes in the next income level. So, that, the end result for this is that people at the highest income, mostly 50% and below for both renters and owners, as we can see, have the least options. So, the shortage here means that they're, they are overpaying. They're paying over 30% of their income because there are no more housing option priced appropriate for their income levels in order for them not to be cost burdened. So, they have to spend more to be cost burdened, to occupy a house. And next, please. So, that previous slide talks about, right now, existing, where are the mismatches? And this talks about projecting into 2030, when this will look like. The takeaway is that in 2030, most likely, there will be increase in people earning 50% of the AMI and below for a county. That will be 560 additional owner households and 250, 15 for rental households earning, you know, lowest income. That's defined by HUD as very low income and below. Also, most likely, over half of the for-sale home rental units in the future needs to cater to smaller household size based on recent demographic trends. Next, please. Implications from this section, again, can't stress enough, very tight housing market, strong demand, supply for housing affordable for, you know, people earning at or below 50% of AMI, most likely require subsidies. Also, need to encourage new housing construction to accommodate the higher end of the market to ease the competition at the middle and lower end of the pool. Future incomes and, sorry, future homes and rental units should cater to smaller household size. Again, that could decrease housing cost and also provide more diverse housing options for people. Next, please. Now, let's look at some other topics that are very relevant and important to this assessment as well. So, we talked about, okay, there are homes, maybe right now, that are affordable, relatively affordable compared to national level. However, that doesn't mean that they're all occupiable. A lot of them has housing condition issues that are inhabitable or they're substandard. So, we looked at all the residential parcels in the county and develop a method to score them, basically. We look at their assessed improvement value per square footage, compare that value of each individual property to the medium. So, if they fall at or below 50% of the medium, meaning they're underperforming compared to all the mediums, then we consider them of poorer housing conditions. And on this map, they are colored in either dark orange or maroon. So, the darker color they are, meaning that they have poorer housing conditions. And we can see in the county, a lot of them concentrate in the northern part. And within Georgetown, not surprisingly, mostly in the urban core of the city as this area tend to have more older housing stock. Next, please. We also looked at publicly subsidized housing, which ones of them are at risk of expiring, their income restrictions and affordability restrictions expiring. And they mostly are located within the city, on the west side of the city. And these dot represent the properties that will expire by 2034 in the next 10 years. So, that means that the city and the county would wanna, you know, work with different entities, government agencies, et cetera, to try to extend and preserve their affordability levels. Next, please. Finally, we looked at data for homelessness issue. This is data from 2019 to 2024 of the point in time, time count. This is basically a nationwide homelessness, like a snapshot in time kind of survey. So, every, you all know that this is like one day in January to go on a street to basically count how many people are on the street. Know that this data has limitation because people have to meet HUD's definition to be counted as homelessness, meaning that they actually need to be on the street, et cetera, and doesn't count people who are at risk or about to be homeless. So, again, because of the method, it, it serves to be a Snapchat, snapshot, like a point in time to see on that particular day, how many people are on the street. And you can see that it's been increasing, especially since 2020, 2023. So, that means that the city and county needs to have strategies to keep monitoring the homelessness issue and probably have, need to come up with housing strategies to cater to these special needs and most vulnerable population. Next, please. Again, because of the limitation in the, the data of the point in time count, we supplement with other measures of homelessness. As you can see that according to Scott County Public School, there are actually 344 students that meets the definition of homelessness. And also for the non-perfect organization in my house, they actually have served over 800 people between June 2023 and July 2020, no, July 23 to June. Yeah, 22 to 23. So, as you can see, this is a much larger population than what is actually captured by the point-in-time data. And more, more data and analysis is needed to actually evaluate, you know, how many people are actually at risk or experiencing homelessness and there should be housing policies targeting and serving this population. Next, please. Now, I will turn it over to Russ to talk about these, you know, directions for housing recommendations and policies.
Okay, thank you, Summer. This is Russell Archibone, Vice President and Principal of RKG Associates. Because of a surgery recently, I was not able to travel to community, but wanted to be part of the meeting tonight to sort of help answer some of your questions, sort of clarify where we think this is heading. And this is sort of the set of strategic housing directions that we discussed with the Housing Needs Assessment Advisory Committee on Thursday. You received a copy of the presentation we made to them. It was a much longer meeting, you've got an abbreviated version tonight. But why don't we just walk through this? I'm sure you have some questions and my guess is some of the questions are related to the directions that we think we may be heading in this. As Summer stated, I think we know a lot more over the last couple decades of where the local population is going in terms of the number of people, the changes in household types. And thus, you could logically say that it's leading probably real estate developers and real estate people to make certain decisions about the type of products that are offered locally, both market rate and, and more affordable products. See active adults and retirees gaining numbers locally, young professionals, new families, smaller households, as, as Summer pointed out. And then, how do we provide for people who are making less than the area median income? Generally speaking, people making 80% of the area median income, they may be able to afford an ownership house. But anything below that generally is, is much harder for them to maintain the house and, and pay the cost. And it's hard to get that house very affordable. So, where you get affordability typically is in multifamily developments or something that has a little bit more density where you can bring in associated monies from other sources, whether those be subsidies from the government or, or other means to get those prices down. You know, we think there's a potential to have mixed-income communities that have really the same type of housing offered to everyone in the community, whether or not you're, you're buying a market-rate unit or you're buying a, a unit that might be subsidized. No one really knows the difference. They all, they all look the same quality. They may be slightly sized differently to keep some units more affordable than others. But mostly for the, what's allowed to happen is that the developer comes in, provides the housing, and there's outside federal tax credits used to write down the cost of some of the housing. So, it's not a subsidy in a traditional sense, but it is a tax classification that the developer works under to make the, the housing more affordable. And we think there's probably a need because there's mostly single-family homes in your market, that there needs to be a little bit more diversity. And when people talk about that, they're talking about duplexes, triplexes in your community. There, there could be more townhomes. So, these are typically attached. They're smaller in size in terms of gross square footage. Cottage homes, which is a, a pretty typical retirement-type home where there's shared driveways and there's a common wall oftentimes on those single-level homes. They cater to people's. They cater to people's sort of mobility, mobility needs over as they age. And they sort of can give up some of the, the square footage that is hard to maintain. And then partner communities, and that can be used by any number of folks in the community for, at different stages of life. The homeless situation is, is somewhere alluded to. You know, it's no easy solution there because once you get into the issue, you realize that even if you had, you know, 10 homeless people, there's a really good chance that they're all gonna have different care needs or housing needs that don't overlap. People who have substance abuse issues may not be compatible in a situation where people have domestic violence at home and are trying to separate from that, or mothers with children, or people who've just been dislocated from their job. I mean, you just can't mix everyone together and say it's gonna work out. So what tends to happen is you need more facilities, smaller in nature, and maybe only serving, you know, 10 people. But you need to be able to provide security and safety in those environments. So we need to talk to those homeless providers to get a better sense of what they think their needs are. In those areas that are showing decline, you saw the, the condition rating. Well, the condition was basically reflecting the value of those properties on a per square foot basis. So the lower the value of the home, you can sort of infer that there are probably condition issues that are causing the assessor to, to value those lower. So do you not take a neighborhood-based revitalization strategy to sort of get at the heart of those issues where the conditions are, are showing signs that people aren't able to, to maintain their properties? Finally, you know, we sort of looked at the issue of short-term rentals, which is not a, a huge issue in your community. It tends to be focused in communities that have, you know, a tourism draw where people are coming in, they're taking vacations, they're coming to events. Now you are near, you're around colleges and you have the potential for that to occur as well. The, the issue tends to be is that the supply, that, that declining supply, meaning the, the units that are in worse shape, tend to be targeted as the potential to be purchased, renovated, and put back on the market as a short-term rental. So they go from, many cases, a long-term rental, which are lower priced, to now a, a high-value rental that's used on weekends and the rents are four and five times what they were before. So I bring that up just to say that something that should be monitored and could change the dynamics in your community if the numbers change in terms of the gross number of short-term rentals. And then, you know, there's a couple of different ways of looking at this issue. You all are focused because you're saying, look, we have a, a growing population, the need for housing, and housing's getting more price pricey and beyond the means of local people. That's all true. Outside of your community, there's a whole group of national investors that would look at your community and say, you know what? That's a pretty affordable market for what we do. And we can buy a number of lower value homes, renovate them, and then put them on the market or as rentals, or switch them over to short-term rentals and get a, a much larger rent from those. So I, I say that to say that others would view your community as more affordable than you may view them. And you have to be conscious that, you know, and this has happened over the last decade, investors at that level are buying up hundreds of units in communities and they're converting them quickly, and that adds to the price inflation. So that's sort of where we're going, at least in big picture terms. I wanted to hear what questions you all may have or what clarification we can make from our findings.
Questions?
Yeah, a question, a couple of them actually. If there were a comment about more smaller units are needing to lower the housing cost, what size units are you talking about when you say more small units?
So right now, as we mentioned, homes sold in a pasture is usually between 2,000, 3,000 square feet. So anything below that range will be, you know, smaller than what the market is demanding and delivering right now. Again, this is a trend that we're talking about, like homes is, is very common in our communities as well. Homes newly built are becoming bigger or more expensive. We're saying that is to say if no more approach is, you know, implemented, the market will only catch up with this demand for, of course, bigger houses. People want, you know, fancier products. It's, it's just to say that the county and city wanna intentionally or on purpose encourage maybe developers that could cater to not really like the normal high-end market. So under 2,000 will be ideal.
Thank you, man. I guess this to the judge and mayor question. Is this part of the strategy or are we still building the strategy?
We're still, we're still building this. These are the sort of the findings that are coming out of it.
You're hearing the data as I hear the data. And I think you take the data and then you formulate a strategy with developers. And you look at other communities that have experienced similar market conditions. And, you know, I, I don't think it's reinventing the wheel. Let's look at what's been done in other communities and, and try to, to work collaboratively with developers to try to put more units that might need, that might meet, meet the needs of our community. I just, you know, there's so many young people and it, that are working that can't afford to buy a home in our community. And I think Kelly can speak to this because he, he's in the lending business and other people in the real estate business. It's, it's a real issue, but I think we now have to take this data and I think we have to, to work collaboratively to try to, to, to look at next steps.
Yeah, I was, I guess I was confused about this previously. I'd asked about it was though I thought that strategy was part of this, so.
Yeah, I think the next time we meet with you, you will see the strategy laid out for you. And we'll start to put together actions and strategies that sort of speak to these issues. And I think that's ultimately what you're looking for. One thing I'll say is that it's sort of left unattended. You know, most developers like building what they always build because it takes some risk away for them. It, it provides, it provides a profit that they're looking for. There's other folks that are just strictly catering to the top end of the market because the margins are bigger. There's other people who are doing other products that are missing here, that still make a profit, but they're providing something that sort of would be more affordable to people who are buying their first homes. They're not gonna be able to access the top end of the market. Maybe in their second home, they're, they're able to do that, but, or, or maybe not at all. But we, we, we can't have other alternatives for people. And I suppose, as the example I gave before, a townhouse allows someone to buy their first home. Maybe that home is 70, I mean, maybe 1,800 square feet rather than 2,800 square feet. That alone is gonna create a more affordable product. Plus, they don't have the same land underneath the building that you're paying a lot for. So it's, it's about variety, it's about numbers. The numbers will bring the average down a bit. Most of this is gonna be market rate housing. So there's gonna have to be some level of affordability that is built into the assumptions. But that's, that's really what we have yet to provide you, which is the strategy for doing that.
As far as the data, we'll be refreshing the data. But this is a snapshot of one time. If we don't refresh it after six months, then it's, it's almost obsolete. So if there, yes, in that strategy, some line says refresh the data within some timeframe to keep the data fresh so we understand what our conditions are.
Well, we have, we have market data through 2024, 2023, 2024. Census data is updated annually through estimating and projecting. So I mean, there's, you have the full array there in front of you. And if you're talking about, okay, what do we need to make policy decisions? You have what you need. The question is, you know, what are the policies and what are the intended results? And can you get to where you need to be, let's say, for example, by 2030? What does that look like? And who needs to be involved in that effort? Obviously, you know, city, county government has one role to play, but it's, there's others who are gonna be bigger players than that, than you all.
I have a question, maybe more of a comment. I appreciate all this data. I think it's very helpful and I agree with the judge that, and you, the strategy building off of this. This is gonna be quite helpful. I was wondering, however, if a deeper dive that's focused on Georgetown and Scott County might be taken to show us some of the obstacles perhaps that we're facing to increasing housing, whether it's planning and zoning obstacles that we might be able to work on or mortgage banks and lending, more creative ways to open up lending to folks or NIMBY obstacles, not in my backyard. I know those are obstacles in some places. I don't know if a dive, a deeper dive in these areas has, is part of this. Also coordinating with government and FFA and, and other lenders, has that been a part of looking at how we're doing there? It's a different kind of data, it's a different kind of look. But I think that as we move towards strategy. I also think that, I get something in the mail every week and you probably do too. I'd like to buy your house for cash. And a lot of houses are being sold for short-term rentals and the impact that that might be having locally as far as making the housing shortage worse. So some of that data, I think in all of those different areas would be helpful as we move toward strategy.
Well, in terms of the strategies, there's, there's, most of what you'll see are gonna be those that you can have an impact on. In other words, you control some part of the, of the outcome. That's worthy of your investment and your time commitment to those. There's other things, as you mentioned, more vigilious rates, things that are beyond your control that we will alert you to that when conditions change, that will create other opportunities that don't exist today. So calling those out become more relevant. When you, when you, when you mention things like people getting offers to buy their property tomorrow, that is an example of investors working this market, trying to see what the potential is of the market. Now, those are, tend to be the smaller types. The guy who maybe purchases two or three homes and fixes them, fixes them up. But it, it, it happens at a lot of different levels. And then you have to be mindful of that as almost a threat to the community because people say, sure, I guess I could sell out. I mean, it's a good price. And then all of a sudden, they're in a different housing environment where they can't buy what they just sold. And no, no immediate prospects of that to happen. So there's lots of things going on a lot of different levels, at a personal level and a community level that, that just need to be aware of.
I noticed that your data is really geared to the, for the county. So do you break it down as to what are some of the shortfalls in the city versus in the county? Like what are the housing needs that's inside Georgetown city limits versus those in the county?
Well, we obviously looked at both. And for purposes of presenting tonight, couldn't spend a lot of time separating them out. But the, the analysis in the report that we provide you will have a breakout of what, what the city's conditions are versus the county's. But I think that becomes part of the recommendations where there is a deviation between the city and county in terms of conditions on the ground and solutions are slightly different. I think that's where we need to call those out to, so you know. But I mean, as sort of was alluded to before, so much of this is gonna be collaborative and cooperative between you all in the room plus other players across the region that are working on these issues. And wherever you can learn good examples from other communities that are facing the same thing, it's always helpful to, I mean, there's no pride ownership here. I mean, a good idea is a good idea, and we're gonna look for those and tell you what they are. Another thing I wanted to mention, and then we have to shut down the meeting, is that we did two, two surveys. One was an employer survey to see how relevant this issue was for them about their ability to attract workers with this issue in the background. Then we, then we surveyed 1,800 of your residents to find out what, what they were sort of most concerned about as it relates to housing. And we didn't share that with you tonight because of lack of time, but we will bring back to you the, the answers that they gave us. That will speak to other strategies that we need to address to, to, to meet their needs. Any other final comments or questions?
I don't know. Go ahead, Kelly, I'll follow up.
Quick comment. Ms. Amber's comment about not my backyard. And I don't know if we've looked at ADUs and how they all benefit. But in the next five years, we're gonna have a lot of baby boomers that are gonna be selling their home. There's gonna be a huge amount of homes come on the market because those people are either going to assisted living or let's say in my case, if I want to have my parents come and live with me, but I need to put an accessory dwelling unit in the backyard or accessory into my house. And I don't know if we've looked at that as a strategy, but I think that's something that we should be looking at.
Yeah, we, we have, and it, and it will probably show up in your strategy as well. It's, it's, it's sort of hit and miss across the country in terms of people's success stories with that. If you're in a denser community where you have smaller lot sizes, that's harder to achieve. You guys get more land, you have the ability to probably do that at a higher level. And we see that as one of the possible ways to meet the needs of sort of aging in place population, like it's that segment of the population. So it may very well have a good, good role to play here.
And this is Joe Covington. One item that I would like to see wrapped into this is, you know, we talked about how the short-term rentals impact our housing. There's another group of individuals that, that Rick and I have talked about quite a bit. And it's individuals that are living in sober living facilities. And it'd be interesting for me to know if we can capture, you know, what's that true number in our community of individuals living in sober living homes here in Scott County? And then how many of them are there? And, you know, that, that piece of, of data, because a lot of those people are experiencing homelessness and then they get into a sober living and they, they very transitional and very, you know, that, that piece, I think, I would like to see wrapped into the conversation as well. And we need, as a community, to look at how do we support those individuals as well.
Okay, we'll talk to Candace about that this week.
All right, it is about this time here. I want to thank the fiscal court and county for here. So that being said, it's 7:00.
Give me a minute.